With that, I'm going to welcome everyone to the November twelfth meeting of the Board of Appeals. Remind everyone that this meeting is going to be recorded. It will be available on the town's website. Within a few days, we'll start by taking attendance, Dave Hatfield. Joe Pride.
Here.
Kasumi Humphries. I saw her name at one point.
She said she was having technical difficulties.
Okay, Kirsten Brown.
Yeah.
Greg Demersion.
Here.
Mitt Patel.
Here.
Okay, with that, we'll see if we can get Kasumi and Chip online here. And in the meantime, Joe, I'm going to ask. I forgot myself, Tom Lucy, obviously, I am here. So, Joe, maybe you can read the. Legal notice.
Sure thing, Mr. Chair. It consists with the governor's orders extended certain provisions of the open meeting law. Every effort we've made to allow the public to view and or listen. To the meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number, one, three, zero, one, seven, one, five, eight, five, nine, two. Meeting ID eight, four, three, one, six, eight, zero, three, two, five, three, passcode zero, three, four, seven, five, seven. Please only use dial in or computer and not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. In compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, this location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you're a person with a disability and require information. Or materials in an alternate format, or if you require any other accommodation, please contact the town's disability coordinator, William Renault. Town engineer at seven, eight, one, two, four, six, six, three, zero, eight, as far in advance of the event as possible. Every effort will be made to grant your request. Advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove an accessibility barrier for you. One, continued hearings. Two, twenty-six dash twenty-three Christine and Michael Guarani. Guarani, Guarano, sorry about that. Application for variance under Article nine, section one ninety dash forty-nine of the Wakefield. Zoning by law related to a first floor addition to be constructed onto an existing single family dwelling. The property is shown as map fourteen B zero, five, six, zero, zero, S four lock parcel. Fourteen B zero, five, six, zero, S four of the assessors map and is located at ten Indian Hill Road. Three, twenty-six dash twenty-four Andy Fitz, O B O Bank of America. Application for determination and or finding with respects to a continuation and extension of non-conforming uses under Article. Sixteen, section one ninety, one oh one, eight point three of the Wakefield zoning by law related to replacing five. Existing signs, the property is shown as map seventeen lock parcel zero, zero, two dash one, five, six of the assessors map. And is located at two Smith Street for twenty-six dash twenty-five Smurfette, Smurfette. Westbrook application for variance pursuant to Article thirteen. Section one ninety dash eighty of the Wakefield zoning by law. From requirements of Article thirteen of the Wakefield zoning by law permitting to signage requirements to allow signs on the existing building. The property is shown as map thirty-six W lock parcels, ten A of the assessors map is located at three sixty-five Autobahn Road. Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Joe. I will note, since I read the roll call, that both member Chip Tarbell and Kasumi Humphries have joined us. So thanks, guys, for coming on. Before we get to the regular agenda, as is our practice, there's been a request for a couple of continuances. I'll read those then. So folks are here for the cases I'm about to. Read in, these matters will not be heard tonight. First one comes from attorney Brian McGrail. The letter dated today. Regarding Fifty Corner Power Parkway, case numbers twenty-six dash one, twenty-six dash two, twenty-six dash three. Please, Miss, dear Mr. Chair, please continue this matter until your meeting in December. We have reconciled the wetlands line with the Conservation Commission, and we are currently in the process of revising plans based on that line. Looking for a. Motion to continue that till December.
Mr. Chair, move that we continue the matter at Fifty Corner Power Parkway to our meeting on December tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing none, regular voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Assuming.
Yes.
I vote yes, matters continued. Next matter to be continued is. Case number twenty-six dash twenty-three Christina Michael Guarino, ten Indian Hill Lane. Looking forward to continue this to the December meeting as well.
So we had an open now, right? That's a new hearing?
Yeah, it is not opened. Nope.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, I move that we continue the. As yet unopened, new hearing at ten Indian Hill Road to our meeting on December tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing none, regular voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Assuming.
Yes.
I vote yes, matters continue to December meeting. All right, back to the regular portion of the agenda. Continued hearings come first. First up, case twenty-five, twenty-one, case twenty-five, twenty-two, one fifty-four Salem Street and one fifty-eight Salem Street. Mr. McGrail.
Now, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record, attorney Brian McGrail, on behalf of the applicant, one fifty-four and one fifty-eight Salem Street is the property address, as you mentioned. We're back before you tonight. We've had some homework assignments and some accomplishments with the. Town engineer that I'd like to go over tonight, kind of inching this matter hopefully closer to conclusion. So, kind of taking it in order, if I may, we have submitted some materials last week, as you know. I'd like to, I guess, initially highlight the, the landscaping plan, if I can share my screen.
Yeah, please do.
So the real highlight on this is Mr. Tarbell had asked us to increase our. Evergreens to seven and eight footers. Which we have now done. Think you can see that at the top of the screen. And he also asked us to increase our maples and dogwoods. And honey look is to three and a half, three to three and a half caliber. Which has been done right in, right in this area. So I just wanted to point out that that's been accomplished. As requested.
Sorry, sorry, just couldn't. Chip, you okay with the shrub? Diameter? As well?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, they're a little small, but that's okay to start with. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thanks, thanks, Brian.
Problem.
Next is just really a minor change. In the architectural, as was requested by. The board, I'd like to highlight that. And the best place to show this is really in the one elevation. So. This is the, the fence. Coming in. Again, Mr. Tarbell had requested. Get to the right one. Think it's next. The next. I missed it. There it is. Mr. Tarbell had asked that we make match that fence. Style to this one. If you recall, this one used to be more of the metal fashion, which we now, which we still have. On the. Other side, which was acceptable to the board. But Chip had asked that we, we thought it was a good idea also. So now that fence matches and that spec. Has been changed. In the spec sheet. To call that out. The next thing we'd like to talk about is it was discussed. About mail, mailing, how we would deal with the post office on this project. And. This was also brought up by Mr. Tarbell, and he was right. That the, we, my client did go down and visit with the postmaster. And they will not deliver to the individual houses or the individual units. So Nick, Nick who is online, Nick Leo, you're familiar with. I had an opportunity to meet with the postmaster and talk about, you know, potential options. It's really hard to lock them in, you know, until they actually see the development. But, but what, we had an idea, and I'd like to share that, on a location that we would like to push them to. Which we think pursuant to our discussions. Will be acceptable. So we thought this area in the cul-de-sac would be a good area. To put the, put the. The mail receptacle. When the folks come in to the houses, they can just go to the cul-de-sac, get their mail and go back. And it kind of, when the folks are going to the home to the condominiums, at the end of the day, they can just stop here, grab their mail and pull in, or. Any of them could walk to the mailbox. It's kind of in a, in a center location. And then we have a sample of what Nick is thinking. Would be something that would be appropriate. This is, Nick found this, it's a very high-end. Black filled engraved. As you can see, it's got thirteen and then one for a package. Spot, if that was needed, but it does have thirteen slots that would work nice with the, with the development.
Right, you may want to check that only because. Dealing with I, what I had to deal with, when I dealt with the postmaster, they wanted one package per five units. So you might need another one with larger packages. That's what I was told.
Appreciate that. Nick, Nick, do you want to add anything with your conversation on the postmaster?
Yeah, so they seemed open to obviously having one centralized mailbox. Rather than one for the townhouses and one for the street, because it doesn't necessarily make sense to have two centralized boxes. But they did confirm that nobody's getting mail basically to their door, either on the cul-de-sac or in the townhomes, so. I had proposed this, and I'm waiting for final confirmation, but he seemed to think that it was feasible. Regarding the package comment, this actual size. Same size mailbox, they can shrink the thirteen boxes. These are kind of oversized ones right now and add more package boxes. So that's something that. I'll have a final conversation with them about if they want me to add parcels. It doesn't seem that the overall width or height of this actual mailbox will change. It'll just kind of reconfigure. The doors. And add parcel boxes. They did also say if people have like Amazon packages and stuff, they will deliver those to the door. Because I was like, well, they're just going to leave everybody's packages next to this mailbox? And they said, no, they. Do go to the doors with packages. Allegedly. So. But it's the nicest, it's the nicest mailbox I could find. A lot of them were just very, very ugly. This is nice, kind of decorative, matches. Matches the lanterns, and it's all black too, so I think it'll fit in well.
It was like a black cast aluminum?
Yeah, it looks like, it looks like black kind of cast iron style.
No, that's fine, but that's the exact question, like, what if they're big packages? They're not going to leave them like underneath it or anything?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, they'll go to the door, yeah.
Brian, that location though, if somebody's walking up to the mailbox and getting the mail, they are in the driveway. Correct? There's no sidewalk.
Let me bring it back up, Kasumi, hold on. Correct.
Right, so if he, if somebody's standing in front to getting the mail. That, that person is technically in the driveway. So I, I don't know.
Yeah.
I guess not so many people drive in there. It's only eight unit beyond that point, but still.
And we can move it, we understand the point, this, you know, that we're just kind of floating that idea. You know, I mean, just one of the things that's difficult with this too is with snow, you know, when you plow, it's going to have to be kept open.
But that's true, wherever you put it on the circle.
Yeah.
The other side has a sidewalk, right? The other side of the cul-de-sac, right?
Correct, over here there is, yeah.
Yeah, it's a good point, Kasumi, I don't know.
We get our, we get, we have our decorative wall here.
I think either way, it has to stay next to the curb. And not on the other side of the sidewalk, so that the, the mailman doesn't have to get out, basically, hypothetically, to, to put the mail in.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think no matter where it is, you're going to have to stand in the road to get the mail.
I, I for one would prefer it where they've located it because it's hidden from Salem Street.
We also put it next to one of the, one of the proposed light poles, so if people get their mail at nighttime, they can actually see what they're doing as well.
Right, winter, yeah, high time hours, yeah.
Or after four thirty these days.
And the other thing is, post office is going to tell you whether they accept the location or not.
Yep.
Yeah, we really don't want it up near Salem Street because we don't want people stopping at the entrance.
Right.
No, no, it's just somewhere along that cul-de-sac, but that's, that seems reasonable.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah, great, let's move on.
Yep. So the other thing that we were waiting on was the town engineer's final review and sign off. He sent a letter to the board, I think it was dated, I think it was October twenty-two maybe, but you have it. He has signed off on all aspects. He's requested some specific conditions, which. I'm going to go over draft conditions tonight, but, but as the board requires in our final plan. I will make sure that those conditions that are in his letter are referenced on the face of the plan, the appropriate ones, that's where the board always wants them. They're not referenced there now because, because we didn't have, you know, they didn't, they weren't, the plan came before his final comment and approval that required some of those conditions. Those typical conditions are the I N I contribution, the as-built plan requirement. Stuff like that, that we will, we will make as notes on the final plan set. Would you like me to go through his letter? Do you deem that necessary, Mr. Chair, or?
I don't, but if others want to, I circulated this last month when we got it, or not, you know, on October. I think as our practice though, you know. To your point, just want to make sure everything that's in the DPW engineering letter ends up is either a condition or on the plans.
Yeah, the plans have to add some things. So, and, and we'll make sure that happens for the final plan set.
Mainly site plan, right, Brian?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm fine with that, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. And just at, at the bottom here, they are also recommending the applicant provide a five thousand dollar contribution to town of Wakefield. So it's townwide signal improvements and infrastructure required due to the communal impact associated with this project and other growth in the area, so. Town's asking for that, as well as specifically for this site, so. Want the board members to be aware of that as well.
Okay. I would like if it's okay to go through so far the draft conditions. I submit those to the board, they can go through those pretty efficiently. So I'm going to go through these field, you know, these are, so these are boil plate for the board at this point, where number one, the board is retaining. We have to comply with all conditions, the board retains jurisdiction for minor amendments. If it's material, it requires a new hearing.
Before you go any further, can you blow these up a little bit?
Oh, sure.
If it's just me, it's hard to see.
That better?
It's not just you.
Keep going. There you go. It's an aging board, Brian, an aging board.
All right, so the first one is that we have to comply with all the conditions and the board's retaining jurisdiction to approve minor amendments. That don't materially alter the terms. If it's material, it requires a new hearing to be required to amend the decision. And if there's any disputes or clarifications, they can't be resolved by the zoning enforcement office that they, that's retained by the board. Number two, we have to provide the building inspector, police department, fire department, public works, the list to contact people. Obviously, number three, the appearance of the projects has to be, has to match the site plan, the architectural drawings and the landscape plan. Have to comply with all notes and requirements on the plans. Number four, prior to applying for the building permit, we have to complete set of plans for the board to review. The building permit plans and the plans have to be the same. As are submitted to the building inspector for the building permit, the purposes for the board to confirm the building permit plans are the same. Is the final site plan, final architectural drawings. Furthermore, prior to, at the time applying for building permit, our architect and site civil engineer. Have to provide the building inspector with a signed stamped affidavit. Certifying that the plans and drawings submitted with the building permit are the same. And match with the final site plan and final architectural drawings.
Brian?
Yep.
Sorry, and number four, just for consistency, when we say it has to. Be the same as the final site plan, architectural, also landscape, right?
Let me see.
Because the previous condition says it. Final site, architectural landscape, so just carry that through, I think. Right?
Yep. You just stopped sharing, I just want to be able to mark it up, Dave. Otherwise. Just how to enable editing. So you were on number four, Dave?
That was number four, it says final site and architectural, just add landscape.
That's just a note for me.
I mean, you know, I'm assuming building plans for review should include that, yeah. Five only mentions architectural.
Yeah.
And landscape for the markup, but. That might be okay for a site when we get there for a markup panel, but. Just the number four, it seemed like landscape belonged, yeah.
Fix that. Number five, the applicant should provide a markup panel on site to play, displaying simple materials, including exterior finishes, window frames, colors, stone grout. For review and confirmation by the board that they're consistent with the final architectural drawings. And final landscape plan, because the site plan is really not applicable for markup.
Right, right.
Markup panels should be completed prior to that particular, I just required to be put on the markup panel, I put on the building. So we need to see them before they go up. Have to comply with an operation and maintenance plan, which I'll talk about after this. Seven, in the event of any conflict between a decision and the final plans, then the plans control. Applicant has to provide infrastructure improvements, including but not limited to new sewer pipe within the Eastman area on the property as shown on the final site plan. If allowed to by the appropriate town officials or boards, and shall be responsible for the cost of the same. During construction, parking is not allowed on Salem Street, and then on-street parking will be restricted to personnel in designated areas. At the sole discretion of the project superintendent.
So Brian, where do we think they're going to park?
Along the roadway on the way in.
Yeah, there's plenty of staging area here.
No, so it's going to go in first, there'll be a road going in and then they'll park there. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Just, you know, it's good that the conditions there, but just realistically, where's it going to happen? Okay, thanks.
Number ten is the affordable restriction, so maximum of eight units, because this is the applicable to the attached dwelling complex, one of those units has to be affordable. And that's standard language that we have, given, you know, residents of Wakefield, you know, the, the priority during the lottery. This, on the affordable sequencing, I change this a little bit because usually it goes twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, but where there's only one unit here. I just said no market rate units exceeding fifty percent. Of the total shall be occupied unless the affordable dwelling unit has been completed and occupancy issued, so. So basically, once you hit four units, that, that affordable dwelling unit has to be done. No signage for the project has been approved, you know, we'll, we'll come back with a sign on the wall. You, you reserve jurisdiction on that. The I N I fee required, which we talked about. This is a standard condition the board has, that prior to commencing any work. A demolition, that there has to be a meeting with all the appropriate department heads. To talk about delivery times, sequencings, procedures related to the work, and we have to comply with their requirements. And then finally, this is what you had mentioned, Mr. Chair, the five thousand dollar contribution with the traffic advisory committee required. And then there'll be other conditions that pursuant to the town engineers letter that will have to be incorporated into the plan set.
Brian, do we need to include that? The conditions that you meet all conservation and, and planning requirements as well?
No, I mean, you know, because we have to meet those anyways under those boards.
Okay.
And a lot of those things are really not jurisdictional for you, Chip, because like the planning board's dealing with the roadway and, and this doesn't. Like the planning board's not going to say they, they have to meet your conditions because they don't have jurisdiction over it. And the planning board really doesn't have jurisdiction over the project you are permitting.
And what about Concom?
They, they have everything over the whole site. So.
I, you know, Chip, for me, they can't get their building permits without complying with that stuff.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay, I just, I think in the past years, we may have done it. And then we may have decided we're not again.
Right.
I don't remember.
Just as it, we're trying to put more things, the decision was not to put in unnecessary language like that, that's already covered. We tried to put as much as possible on the plan sets.
Which is great, yeah.
Brian, just quickly back up to number seven, just a minor thing.
No problem.
I just noticed that if you pull by it, at the end it says. Any conflict between this decision and the plans, the plans and shall control, so just.
It should say in drawings.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep. Cool, thank you. Other than that, that's good.
Okay, can I stop sharing?
Yeah. Any other questions, comments from board members?
So.
I got a couple of other things too.
Oh.
What's that?
I have a couple of other things too.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to. End the conditions though.
Okay.
Because I know we do have to talk O and M.
Yep.
And then eventually I got to open up to the public. So if you have more, Mr. McGrail?
I do. So we still, we have not submitted the O and M plan, we're working on that. I think I've mentioned, we're working with our neighbors on Nablis Way, attorney Genie is online today. Him and I, I have had discussions, because one of their, you know, bigger concerns is, is snow. Is the snow removal, that they just want to make sure that we're not going to be dumping snow in, in any areas that are going to impact them, so. I'm going to work with him on that aspect of the O and M plan to make sure that that's covered on their behalf. So, you know, we will be submitting an O and M plan before the next meeting. In, in, in their regard also, as you know, their engineer is, has been reviewing this, I believe that they're all set, they have one more. Request, they had a couple of more requests, I talked to attorney Genie today, that they want an extra. A different type of liner on the wall that abuts them, you know, for lack of a better term, I guess more beefed up. Our engineer has agreed to that, so we're going to put that on the final site plan. That will be making revision to add that. And they've had, they suggested that it might be a good idea. To beef up some of the landscaping around unit eight, which is the closest one to them, because they have an industrial use building and. And their comment was well taken, that perhaps it could be beneficial to both parties to, to beat that up a little bit. So we're going to look at that and, you know, just as long as it doesn't interfere, as attorney Genie and I discussed today with any, any drainage. We're, we're more than happy to do that. So that's where we are with that. Also, per your request, Mr. Chair, at the last meeting, we had a site visit with our neighbor Ed Smith on the other side. And we, we met with Ed at, at the properties, we walked the entire property line. It was a great meeting, thank you for suggesting it, it really worked out well. It was a great meeting. Thank you for suggesting it. It really worked out well. You know, Ed is happy that we're gonna be taking, you know, the existing house next to him is on his lot and encroaches actually over the lot line. It's now gonna be like over twenty-five feet back from his lot line. So I think we've talked about it and we're done with this, we're gonna be applying for relief for that one house. To be able to tear it down and rebuild it. And I think, I can't speak for him, but from our meeting, I think Ed's gonna be very supportive of that. And he can certainly speak for himself if he's here, or if not at a subsequent meeting. And we also talked about the tree line. And how my client said that before any trees were taken down on the line, that he would bring our tree contractor out. To walk the property with Mr. Smith again, to make sure that there's, you know, we're in sync and there might be some trees that Mr. Smith wants taken down on his property. That we said we'd be happy to help him out and cooperate with that. So it was a very good meeting with him, very productive. So thank you for suggesting that.
Brian, we normally do that as well. So if they're marked or whatever, I'd just like to know when that happens.
Sure. Yep. Yep, just making another that. And we are, we're gonna be back at the Conservation Commission for hopefully final reconciliation on their plan on Tuesday night. And next Tuesday, and then we're gonna be back at the Planning Board. At the end of the month, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving week. So I think we're coming to an end with your board hopefully, and I think with the Planning Board and. And with the Conservation Commission. And, you know, we thank all of our neighbors for. For working with us throughout the project, through the process. So happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Just, we're gonna wanna see that you wrap up those two processes in case it has any impact on our site plan or anything else that.
Yeah. I'll make sure that, yeah, that we wanna make sure that there's no final issues that those two boards have.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Okay, comments and questions from the board? So, Mr. Chair, just through you, so it sounds like the site plan and landscape plan are not finalized, we're closed, but not quite there, right? Our close. Yep. Might be some final updates before we're, and then architecials?
They're done.
Yeah. So. The ones that we got dated October 21st might be the final ones.
Correct.
Okay. The mailboxes, the wall fence, I think was some of that and.
That's all on site and landscaping.
Oh, that's on site. Okay. I might have put it on the wrong heading, but okay. So we think architecials may be done, but the site and landscape, all right.
Yeah, the architectural dated ten twenty-nine, twenty-five.
Ten twenty-nine.
And landscape, when he mentioned that he wants it beefed up next to the neighbors, we'll need to see that on the final site plan. What happens after that conversation?
Yeah, I think there's, there's a couple of changes, the beefing up of the landscape in that area, if we can do it, and then on the site plan. The detail on the lining on the wall. The lining on the wall.
What are you talking about with the lining on the wall?
It's underground, Chip. It's underground.
Oh, okay.
Like waterproofing, if you will.
Oh, okay. All right.
It's one of the side walls, one of the infiltrators, just to keep water when it's going into the ground and going towards the neighbor.
Great, okay.
Anything else before I open up to the public? Okay, here it's saying none. Are there any members here of the public here to testify on this application? About the information that you heard tonight? If so, please use the raised hand function in Zoom. It's not a big crowd and I'm not seeing anything, so going once. Going twice. Okay, public comment is closed. Back to the board. Pleasure to the board. So next meeting, I assume, Mr. Chair, Brian?
Yep.
Yep, and if there are no major, I mean, there's just those minor landscape. Additions, you know, as far as I'm concerned, we're ready to take an action on this. If we get the O and M plan in, then everything's in shape.
And we get, we get the other two boards done, right?
Exactly.
Okay, so it may have to be continued if they haven't. Totally completed their work.
Exactly. We're the last stop, Chip, as always. But prior to that meeting, we would expect final site plan, landscape, O and M, the conditions, which we had a few comments on, right? And we should be good.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I move, Mr. Chair, that we continue this hearing at one fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem Street to our December tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Second that.
But main seconded, any further discussion here and seeing non-regulable members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Assume me.
Yes.
And I vote yes. See you in December on that. Next up, cases twenty-six seventeen, twenty-six eighteen, twenty-three New Salem Street, Inc. At twenty-three New Salem Streets.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Michael McCarthy for the right of representing the twenty-three New Salem Street, Inc. I'm also representing our BBJM Realty Trust on twenty-six nineteen, twenty-six twenty. The petitions, the petitions are related. They're basically, the requested relief is the same on both counts. And for the purposes of the presentation, it probably makes sense, Mr. Chairman, for you to include both of them as part of a single present, presentation, just in the interest of.
That makes sense. So also gonna open up cases twenty-six nineteen and twenty-six twenty at nineteen New Salem Streets. As they're related to twenty-three New Salem Streets, so we can be as efficient as possible. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. That sounds like a good idea. Floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. So the purpose of the requested relief is to address what really is a title cloud. Caused by an encroachment of a one-story structure from number twenty-three, uh, New Salem Street onto. The property at nineteen New Salem Street. Odd as it may seem, there were no zoning issues until we tried to correct that, that, that encroachment by moving the lot line. As the board is aware, when you have non-conforming lots and non-conforming buildings, which all of these are. And you move a lot line, you lose your grandfathering. So you need relief in order to do that. These buildings, when they were built, this is all, both lots and as the board is aware. Uh, New Salem Street is an industrial district. Uh, these buildings were built about forty or plus years ago, and when they were constructed. There was a zero setback on the sidelines. So you see a lot, may I screen share, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Try that again.
We see the block plan, Michael.
Oh, you do? Okay, great. So the, the one-story small structure which straddles the two lot lines is the building at issue. And you can see, let me just back up to what the point I was making a moment ago, though. This. Up here at the twenty-three, the one-story structure is just a couple of feet off the lot line. You can see on nineteen New Salem Street, the front building is just off the side lot line and. Uh, the two-story structure at the bottom of the plan is just a few feet off the lot line. That, I believe, this was, that was the intention of the then owner of twenty-three New Salem Street, which was Schofield Forms. To construct this building on the lot line or a couple of feet off the lot line, and they misjudged it and built it over the lot line. Now. Frank Tabey, who's online with us, and is the principal of twenty-three New Salem Street, Inc. Purchased twenty-three New Salem Street back in twenty, two thousand twenty-four, and this problem became apparent. He met with Mr. Sullivan, Bob Sullivan. Uh, who is the principal of the trust that owns nineteen New Salem Street, and they worked, they worked this proposal out. Such that there'd be a little bit of a land swap. Lot one would be granted into twenty-three New Salem Street. So that this one-story structure was entirely within twenty-three. It had a little room around it just for maintenance and whatnot, and in exchange, the small parcel, lot two. Would be added to nineteen New Salem Street. So a land swap. The problem, as they say, is that we lose the grandfathering. So in order to do this and maintain the legal status of the lots. And the buildings, we need some findings and some variances, notably. Out here at nineteen New Salem Street, there's a seventy-five foot frontage where eighty is required. Otherwise, there really isn't any, well, the buildings would become technically illegal as well. Without the relief because of the twenty-foot setback on the side, which is the current standard in the industrial district. Bottom line is, uh, there's no new work proposed or no buildings proposed, nothing is moving. Uh, we're just trying to straighten this issue out, which was created, you know, there was no, there was no, nobody was doing anything wrong. They just misjudged what the lot line was. In other words, they weren't trying to sneak this building in. When it was built, it would have been legal had it been right on the lot line. It just was over it. So technically not a zoning violation under the then zoning bylaw, but certainly not a good idea and a title issue. That's kind of, that's the gist of it, the crux of it. I'll try to, if I may, go to a different. If I can do this, it had an overhead, which I don't see right now, but I won't, I won't bother, I won't struggle with that.
It's on your tab up at the top there.
All right, good. I get that.
You go three and a half.
All right, thank you. Yeah, there you go. So here we have it, twenty-three New Salem Street there. There's, there's the little structure at issue. You see it kind of juts out here. So that would be the land, this little portion would go to twenty-three. This little section of land would come over to nineteen. There really is nothing else going on out there. We're just trying to straighten an existing situation out, making it legal and doing it the right way. I know that the Town Engineering Department submitted a comment letter where they said we ought to go to the Planning Board first. And then come to the ZBA. I had a conversation subsequent to that, well, I had a conversation with the Assistant Town Engineer. I think the town, the board might have been getting two letters from the Engineering Department. And explained to him why we approached it the way we did in terms of order of procedure. And the reason is that if you go to the Planning Board on an A and R, there are two things that they have to confirm. One is. That you have adequate frontage and the other is that you have adequate area. And as I noted, in this case. A nineteen would not have the adequate frontage. It has, it has seventy-five feet of frontage instead of eighty. So technically, they wouldn't be able to, they shouldn't consider that unless there were a variance. So that's why we're coming to you first. This is the proper order. I explained that, and I think the Assistant Town Engineer understood that and had no problem with it. That's, that's essentially why we're here, what our goal is and why we need the relief, Mr. Chairman. Happy to answer any questions.
After us, do you then go to the Planning Board?
We do. We go, so with, if we're granted the relief, we'll go to the Planning Board with an A and R. Yep, we need to.
So just, just as the board members is thinking about this, just, we do have some correspondence, as Mike said, from. From town departments. One from Acting Fire Chief Tom Purcell has no objection to the application. Concon does not require filing from them, and just a letter that Mike noted that. Regarding what I ordered to go in. Let me just check the nineteen files. Yeah, pretty much duplicate of what I just. Said, hold on. Yeah, the duplicate letters for both, for both cases. So, members of the board, any comments, questions? Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm just making sure I'm totally getting it, because there were multiple applications. I think we have four. Different things, but there were two applications, right, Michael?
Yeah, there were, I think it was actually submitted as more applications, but nonetheless, the way they grouped and noticed. There is a finding of non-conformity, you know. Non-conform, the non-conforming nature, the extension of the non-conformity in both cases, in both properties, and also variances. On both properties relating to the buildings and in the case of nineteen, well, the lots as well, the lots in the buildings as they currently exist.
All right, so I just want to be clear on the finding. Cause nothing's being altered, right? So what, what are we finding?
That there's no new non-conformity as a result.
A result of what?
As a result of.
Land swap or this?
Yeah, the land swap, yep, the land swap and the, and the variances, right. The new, the new lot line, essentially.
Certainly not exasperating anything, Dave.
No, in fact, it's relieving it.
All right, so this is one ninety fifty B, like.
Right.
No, is it fifty B? Is that where we're going? Yeah.
Yep.
And the non-conformities are mainly frontage?
Uh, frontage on nineteen. And building location on both lots. Because the setback is now twenty feet sidelines and, and they're in the frontage, the front setback area as well. So technically, we're asking for variances on building location in the lot line, the frontage on seventy-five. And for non-conformities on the buildings. As well. We can survive, Dave, with either the variances or the non-conformities. But I thought just kind of as a belt and suspender matter would get relief fashioned both ways, or at least apply for it both ways.
Okay, it's just not something we have dealt with very often, so I just.
Yep, understood.
I mean, I'll just, I need a minute, Mr. Chair, just to continue to wrap my head around this one, so. I'm gonna have to open up the public anyway. So any other comments or questions from board members?
Uh, real quick, Mike, is there like a purchase and sale? Are they buying it and selling it for a dollar or anything like that?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be nominal consideration and it will be, yeah, one parcel, you know, deeded to the other for nominal consideration.
It was just curious.
Yeah, yep. There's not a, there's not a written purchase and sale. There's an agreement to proceed along these lines.
Okay.
Okay, hearing, seeing other, no more questions from the board. Is there a member of the public that's here that would like to? Testify regarding these applications before the board tonight based on what you heard? Okay, not really seeing any going once, twice. Closing public comment back to the board. Pleasure of the board. So is the, is the requested finding that there's no? Increase in the existing non-conformities with the law changes to change that interior lot line?
Correct. No new non-conformities.
Right.
And the request on the variances would be to allow for the, the lots. The layout of the building and the lots is currently depicted on the plan. Which, if you want to, if, if, if more specificity is required, it's a frontage variance on nineteen. And building variances on, on the. Frontage and side setbacks on the buildings as shown on the plan.
Okay. And the plans. They seem to be all the same in the plans, right? It's PJ enough.
There they are. There's one, there's but one plan.
No, November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. All right, Mr. Chair. Think I'm okay.
Okay.
Everyone else all right?
I assume we're doing one lot and then the other lot, right?
Yeah, we're gonna, we gotta do, we gotta do decisions separately for twenty-three New Salem Street and nineteen New Salem Street.
Does it matter which one we do first?
I don't think so. Mike, do you have?
No, I don't think so either.
But the finding is.
But the finding is on um is the finding on twenty?
Yeah, we were asking for a finding on both of them, the the way we've structured the relief. Again, the finding would be that um that that there'd be no new non-conformity as a result of the relocation of the lot line, the the swap of those two small parcels. There'd be no new non-conformity created. Um, that would be essentially as a result of the relocated lot lines.
Very unusual, Michael.
Decided to stick around, Dave.
I'm so glad. Okay. I'm just trying to make sure I get the wording right and uh help me out here.
Hey, can I?
So Mr. Chair, I move that we find that the proposed changes, alterations and adjustments to the uh adjustment to the interior side lot lines um on nineteen and twenty-three New Salem Street to account for uh a longstanding building encroachment as shown on the site plans from PJNF and Associates dated November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Create no new non-conformities than the existing non-conformities on the existing lots.
Is this for nineteen or for twenty-three?
Yes.
We gotta do each one individually.
We gotta do each one together. I think your language is fine. Just add what parcel you wanna.
All right. So I'll amend the motion to make that motion, that finding for lot nineteen.
Nineteen New Salem.
New Salem Street, yes.
Second the amended motion.
Okay, motion's been made seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing non-regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Kasumi?
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
Mr. Chair, I move that we make the same finding as previously mentioned for the lot at twenty-three New Salem Street.
Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing non-regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Kasumi?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Okay, both are approved. Mike, uh on these decisions as.
So we need a variance too, right?
Yeah, we need the variance for which one?
Uh, we need variance on on nineteen, it would be for the frontage and the building location. So on nineteen, it would be the uh the the seventy-five foot frontage where eighty would otherwise be required in the um the building location, front, front yard and side yard setback for the existing building locations as shown in the plan.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, I move that we grant a variance pursuant to section one ninety-sixty-six of the bylaw. Um based on the plans from PJNF Associates dated November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Um regarding the layout of lots at nineteen New Salem Street related to the frontage and um the building location. Um, and owing to um circumstances related to soil condition, shape or topography, such as land or structures or little enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise to the petitioner, and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter.
Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing non-regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Kasumi?
Yes.
I vote yes. That's unanimous as well.
And with respect to twenty-three, if I may, it would be the same, exact same motion without reference to a frontage variance.
So, Mr. Chair, I make the same motion as previously noted. Um, we're just referring to the um to the building location, right, Michael? You said, but not the frontage.
Correct.
So same motion as previously noted, um just pertaining to the building location at um uh twenty-three New Salem Street.
Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing non-regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Kasumi?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to state that after twenty-three years, this is a first.
Yeah. So, so like in that regard, if you, if you leave me alone to write this decision, it's gonna take an awfully long time.
Yeah, we will not leave you alone. I know what to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, next up, cases twenty-six dash twenty-one, case twenty-six dash twenty-two, five twenty-five New Salem Street. Well, five twenty-five Salem Street, I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Uh Attorney Brian McGrill, um back on this matter uh at five twenty-five Salem Street. The applicant is I I own a LLC. Um, with me tonight is David Lane and Linda Lee once again. Um, I think we're gonna be rather brief tonight. Um we, you know, gave our introduction um at the last meeting on this and as you may recall, this is the electric vehicle charging uh facility proposed at five twenty-five Salem Street. Uh the board gave us um some, some homework assignments or changes that the board required and we wanted the board to know that we took those to heart and we are making progress. We're not totally done, but we really just wanted to kind of give with the board an update of where we are with those requested changes to make sure we're going in the right direction and kind of go over uh with you what we still have left and and some other uh administrative due diligence things that we're working with. So with that, Mr. Chair, if I could share my screen, please?
Yep, please do.
So this is the site. Um what I submitted, because I thought it would just be easier for discussion purposes uh tonight to bring the board up to speed um is uh the landscaping plan and because this just kind of shows the whole site. So you may recall, uh down the bottom of the screen is Salem Street. Uh, this is our entrance. These are our, our charging units uh where cars pull up. This is our amenity facility for the customers. Um, the first change that the board had requested is, you may recall, we had our transformers located in the front of the site. Um, the board said, that's not gonna work, um put them out back. So we have done that. Um, our clients have done some due diligence and feasibility for that to occur and it can occur. So we are now relocating our transformers uh in the way far back corner of the property. So that's number one. Uh, number two, uh the board um had uh required granite curbing. So there's now a note, you can see it over here, there's notes all over the place that uh is one note pointing to the perimeter of the property that it will all be granite curbing. My clients are very cooperative. I explained to them that um by two minutes does not work very well in the northeast with plowing. So they were very amenable after hearing that, they're changing it to granite. Um, Mr. Todd Bell told us that our landscaping plan was rather scarce, uh scarce, so to to beef it up a little bit. And uh I don't think they just beefed it up a little bit, they beefed it up a lot. We had some kind of abrevieties in the front of the property. Uh now you can see uh they've incorporated a rain garden for their drainage, which um I'll get to in a minute. Uh and they have scattered plantings all over the site. So now um I'll go to the planting schedule in a minute, but they're proposing thirteen trees, ninety-five shrubs and thirty-seven plants. Um, so pretty, pretty big change from what you saw before. Uh, and Chip is the.
Yeah, and Brian, just typically, what I would do is I'd just put those trees up a little bit bigger to three to three and a half as we typically do, so that it doesn't look sparse when they first go in.
Three to three and a half?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. So we're, we're kind of pleased with these changes. These were the real, you know, significant changes, especially the transformers, the landscaping, and then, you know, finally the granite curbing. Um, we're still working on a signage detail plan. My client's putting that together so we can really show you exactly what signs are being proposed because in the, in the plans that were initially submitted, it was kind of like trying to find Waldo. They were kind of scattered throughout. So we're putting together a, 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 a specific sign plan, uh plan package so you can see proposed and where they are. Uh the board, uh Joe, you had mentioned you thought there was too much lighting on the site. Um, tentatively, my client has agreed to that. So we're reworking our lighting plan to reduce it. Um, and and we're still working on that. Um, we uh talked about the fact that we have to go to the traffic advisory committee. They will not be having a meeting until, I think, the first Friday in December. So we'll be on that agenda um for their meeting. Um, we're waiting to set up a meeting with the uh fire chief uh because they want to make sure that all fire code where this is you, a unique and new proposal for the area, that all fire concerns will be addressed. And lastly, the engineering department is still reviewing the drainage uh stormwater uh report that was submitted.
Hey, Brian?
Yes.
As you guys start looking at lighting and we start looking at a twenty-four hour a day operation, I don't know how they've done others or if they have done others, but there should be something with levels of light so that from, if, if there's no car here, that they all dumb down to a certain degree until a car drives into the water or something. I, I have to admit, I don't know how it's done since we don't typically do twenty-four hour operations, but there's got to be a way to do it. So it doesn't always look like Logan throughout the night if nobody's there.
Oh, we didn't do it down the other twenty-four hour one, did we? The one we just approved a year ago?
We did. We did. We said that we would look at their light, they'd reduce their light levels after eleven.
Okay.
And then we said we would look at it, which we did, um and and they reduced the light levels. And that it was operable at that point, you know, because they're, I, I don't think it raised and lowered, it just lowered. But it was okay. It was safe.
Yep, we'll look into that, Chip.
Yeah, there's got to be, I'm sure with today's technology, there's a way to do it.
Yeah.
All right, Kasumi, I see your hand up.
Um, I was thinking about that, this from the last meeting, but Brian, can you remind me how long each person is expected to stay like charging?
Sure. Depending on the vehicle, uh approximately thirty to sixty minutes.
Three zero, three zero to six zero.
Zero to sixty, correct.
Okay, so in uh, so I assume like those person can stay on that, were used showing the tables and chairs. Um, can they look at something, so the company called like landscape forms? They, they're a company who sells like landscape, um like canopies and things like very nice, like modern looking, because if somebody's staying there thirty to sixty minutes and if they are you know, at the table and chairs, like in the middle of the summer, it's gonna be hot and then in the winter time, it's gonna be really cold. Like maybe like a little bit more sheltered area for the tables and chairs. Um that might be nicer.
In a building, isn't it, Brian?
Well, the building is really bathrooms and really a place for, you know, for um you know, this one doesn't have like an indoor amenity area, Chip.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think in the rendering, the tables and chairs are just like on the open area, yeah, outside. So maybe they can take a look at something like that. And then I saw um they have like the vending machine area, but I don't see any like the trash cans outside. Like you have to go into the bathroom to throw something out. So maybe that's something like you can like add it to it too.
Mm-hmm.
That, that was my thought from um last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Um, anybody else?
Brian, will there be someone?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Joe. Yep, go ahead.
Will there be someone there as attendant twenty-four hours a day or no?
No.
Camera monitored, security cameras.
Okay. Sorry, Dave, go ahead.
No worries. Thanks, Joe. Um, so just going back to my notes. So this application is special permits for the use and also the parking. I mean, you may have covered it last time. I may have missed it. What's the relief requested? It's just?
Well, we didn't know. It depended on the curb cut, how it ends up with T A C and the drive lanes. So uh that, that application might end up going away, Dave.
Okay, because I know like when we did the gas station, like people parked at the pumps counted as parking and so it we sort of, you know, we got there, but it was you know, with inclusive um of all the cars in the lot. So, okay, we'll, we'll cover that when it's all said and done. Fair enough. Yep, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? I will note that there's a um there is a memo from D P W from the engineering department dated October twenty-ninth. It's several pages. There's nothing crazy in here. It's just routine stuff. So I will circulate that to the board so you can read it before the next meeting. Um, then they too had uh also recommended going to T A C. So I'm glad we, we already sent them there. So um and the other corresponds from the town I read in at the last meeting. So um with that, then uh there any members of the public here that would like to testify regarding this application? If so, please use the raised hand function and zoom. Going once, twice. Closing public comment for the evening. Back to the board.
Uh, Mr. Chair, before we go forward, I just would like to, because some of the comments were mine, that they reacted to regarding the transformer, et cetera. And I'd just like to thank the, the applicant for moving quickly and listening to us and reacting, I guess, to Brian and his team.
Yep. Well noted. So given the um T A C and some of these other things you got to do, do you think you're gonna be ready in December?
Yeah, I think we, I'd like to be on that agenda just because um we might be at T A C before that. Uh, I don't think they're gonna have a lot with this. That's my hunch. Um, so I would like to, and I, you know, I think we might have all the other stuff to present. So I'd, I'd like to keep it moving and not, not miss that meeting if we don't have to.
By then, will you have gotten any feedback from the fire department, Brian?
We should.
I'm just really curious to hear what they say.
Yep. Yep.
All right. Guess I'm looking for a motion to continue to our meeting in December.
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue the matter at five twenty-five Salem Street to our December tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing non-regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Kasumi?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, matters continued. Um all right, next up, twenty-six, twenty-four, uh Bank of America, two Smith Streets.
So, Mr. Chair, um
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, Dave. I know you had some personal business tonight, so.
Yep, I'm gonna drop it this way.
With that and um
Thank you. Good night, Mr.
Thank you for coming because, you know.
Appreciate it. Yep.
Thanks a lot.
Good night, Mr. Chair, board members. Appreciate it. We'll, we'll talk to you soon. Bye.
So on this one, uh we're gonna, I'll open it, but they've filed for the wrong relief. And what they filed for isn't allowed under our zoning. I'm not sure how an organization's largest bank of America could do that, but they have done it. Um, is someone here representing them?
Um, my name is Ashlyn Strasser. I'm with A G I, the signage vendor, and we also have Camden Leach, who's also with A G I. Um, and then we have Andy Fitz, who was the permanent expert that filed uh this for us as well as Michael Fergus, who is with the property management group, C D R E.
Okay, so what you've done, or whoever filled this out, you're in the, you're in the sign overlay district. You're in the, you're in the sign overlay district. And you, you have the right site, but the site says. I have it right in front of me, non-conforming signs loftily erected prior to the adoption of the article may not be enlarged, extended, altered. Redesigned unless they are made to comply with all applicable requirements in the article. So, you're applying for non-conforming, so you, you're stating upfront that you're non-conforming, and then when you read the zoning, it says you can't do that, I don't. I don't wanna really waste the board's time, you, you, you have to figure this out. And you have to get your application right and refile.
Okay. Camden, any notes for that?
I'm sorry?
Sorry, I'm Camden Leach, I'm with A G I, representing Bank of America. Um, no, I was just making sure that there was no other type of, um, cause we had requested like the continuation and extended, and extension of non-conforming uses, and you're saying that there's no provision for that, okay?
There's no provision for that, in fact, if you read the, your own site, that whoever filed this, I mean. The language is very clear. I mean, crystal clear.
Yeah, yeah, maybe I, maybe I could, I don't wanna waste your time either, uh, sir, um. Maybe I could shed a little light on that, so when we first approached the town.
Who are you?
I'm sorry, my name is Andy Fitz, I'm with, uh, Project Expeditors, um. Uh, was brought on by Bank of America to, um, file the, uh, variance application. When I reviewed the code, um, I, I did note the same provision you're referring to, and our intent wasn't to try and uh, submit something that it isn't even allowable. When we first ran the plans past the town staff.
I gotta stop you right there.
Yes, sir.
Staff is not there to give you legal advice?
Understood.
And they're not there, so spare me that you went to town staff, that's not their job.
Right, no, I'm, I'm not.
I can't take on the liability of giving you guys legal advice.
Understood, that's not, that's not where I was going with it. Yeah, no, it's, I absolutely understand them. I, uh, I must have been a miscommunication on my end, um, my, our intent was to was to get this, was to get the plans, I guess, before the zoning board of appeals, um, and to see, to get your feedback. Uh, to, to, I guess, see if this was something that would even be acceptable, um, and cause their intent is, is to upgrade the signage on the site.
That's great, but you gotta do it in the right way.
Understood.
All right, so with that, um, I think we're gonna move on here.
What do they, did, did, Mr. Chair, do they need to withdraw this application without prejudice and then refile?
That's up to them.
Or figure it out, or do they wanna continue this and then figure it out and then decide what they wanna do? I don't wanna give them counsel, certainly.
Right. But what they've, what they've applied for is not allowed, so even withdrawing it without prejudice, I don't. This. I don't even see what that does.
Need to reapply, basically.
They need to reapply.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you for that direction.
Okay. Next up, case twenty-six dash twenty-five, three sixty-five Audubon Road. Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, for the record, attorney Brian McReel here on behalf of the applicant, Smurfette West Rock. Um, with property at three sixty-five Audubon Road, uh, with me tonight is Robert Murphy, he is the general manager of this location. Um, for Smurfette West Rock, to give you, um, a little background, Smurfette West Rock, West Rock, uh, which is at three sixty-five Audubon Road, is kind of a hidden treasure for the town of Wakefield. Uh, Smurfette West Rock is a global, global leader in sustainable paper packaging, they actually operate in forty countries. And they have over five hundred converting and operating, uh, converting operations and fifty-nine paper mills. Um, this, this plant in Wakefield is located at the far end of Audubon Road. Nobody really knows about it, except when you're driving on one twenty-eight, you see that long brick building. Uh, as you're coming in from Lynnfield, if you're going on the northbound side, it's on your right-hand side, but you can also predominantly see it, um. Um, on the, um, on the, on the, uh, on the other way, too, so going northbound, it's on your right-hand side, uh. No, scratch that, going northbound, it's on your left-hand side, coming southbound from Gloucester, uh, it's on your right-hand side. Um, so what I'd like to do, if I may, um, is share my screening. Yep, please do. easiest, the best way to kinda familiarize you, I took some pitches today, but I found out um, with this property, really the best way to look at is through Google, Google Earth. So this is the property, um, as I mentioned, it's, it's the brick building that you see on one twenty-eight. Um, as you're, as you're coming down from Gloucester on your right-hand side. These are all the trucks, so I mean, this, this, this is an operation that's open at least five days a week, twenty-four hours a day, and employs over a hundred people. Um, it's, you know, as I mentioned, a worldwide company, is Wakefield residents that work here. Um, and you can see when I talk about the far end of Audubon Road. So if you're coming in, um, Audubon Road, um, you come, you come all the way, you know, one twenty-eight is here. So you start on Pleasure Run Road, you kind of wind down, you have Edgewater Office Park, you keep going. All the way down, um, you have the apartments, more Edgewater buildings. And way at the end here is a cul-de-sac, this is the end of Audubon Road. And then, even when you get to the end of Audubon Road, you can see you have a long driveway coming in uh, to the operation. So. What they're requesting is they're requesting two signs, because all they have up here right now is really not a very attractive uh, sign for a building of this nature, they've got a small sign here on one twenty-eight that, you know, doesn't light up, it really doesn't enhance the building. And they have a, another sign on this side of the building, which you can see, which is right here. That, you know, really doesn't light up, so the, the issue that they have, you know, taking this once, one thing at a time, they're requesting a sign, which I'll get into the detail on in a minute, but they're requesting a sign here, and they're identical signs that they're requesting. And the reason for this sign is because when they have, especially at nighttime, when they have deliveries and new truck drivers. They have the address, they come down to, you know, three sixty-five Audubon Road, when they get to the end of the cul-de-sac, they don't know where the heck to go. Um, so they would like a sign on, on this part of the building that lights up, so they'll be able to see it. Uh, as you can see, it has absolutely no impact on anybody. Um, there's no residential area here, um, these are the high tension wires, you've got the office park. Um, so there's really no impact. On this side of the building, um, they really just, you know, where they're, where they're an international company. Uh, people know the name, they, you know, would kind of like to say, hey, here we are, we're in Wakefield, and not just have kind of a, a winky dink sign on a, on a long facade of a building, they would like to make, you know, more of a statement of, um, where they are and who they are. So when you, when you kind of look at this from, let me see if I can. Yeah, when you look at it, you know, where they wanna do it, um. The sign would kind of go right in this area where the gap is, there's no impact on this sign on any area. Um, this here is the sound barrier wall, which is very high, this building sits low. Um, and you've got a huge buffer between any residential hu- houses. Um, so it's really just gonna, um, face the highway. So with that said, um, to kind of get, you know, as I mentioned, when I show you this, we're looking to put a sign over here, and then one right in here, and I'll show you what we're proposing. So you can see, that's the area on the corner of the building, as you're coming off of Audubon Road. Um, these are surface mounted letters and a surface mounted logo. That's the international company logo, uh, fifty-nine inches high, two hundred and forty, uh, inches long. Um, the dimensions of the letters are, are, um, are twenty-four inches. Um, it's, it's front, it's, it's, uh, front lit, which means that it's not like, it's not interior illuminated, the, the letters are lit on the inside of the letter. Um, and as I've mentioned, they're, they're, um, individually mounted. So this is really right in the middle of the building on the one twenty-eight side. And this is on the side that now, when this lights up at night, when, you know, when trucks come in with their GPS, when they get to the end of that cul-de-sac, they're gonna see this. And it's gonna take them home, um, if you will, again, with no impact. Um, I would respectfully si- suggest that, you know, it's pretty tasteful, has really no impact on anybody. Um, Smurfette West Rock is a longstanding corporate citizen of the town. They contribute significantly to our tax base with a commercial industrial tax rate, uh, a number of employees. Um, this is just the type of business that we love to have here for our, you know, for our, uh, tax base and in our industrial area. So, um, I would respectfully request approval, we're requesting a variance, this is not in the sign overlay district. So it would be a variance under article, uh, pursuant to article thirteen, section one ninety-eighty. Um, to allow, um, these accessory building signs, um, in the locations and of the size, which are, you know, they don't meet obviously the requirements of the bylaw. Um, to have anything smaller on a building of this substance really wouldn't do any good, it wouldn't do it justice and wouldn't fit. Happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chair. All right, thank you, uh, before, as board members contemplate questions or comments. Just wanna make note that we have correspondents from acting fire chief Tom Purcell. From, uh, D P W Engineering Department, as well as, uh, the Conservation Commission, uh, the co-agent, none of them have any comments on the signs, and they have no problem with the application. So, we'll, open it up to the board.
I would agree, Mr. Chairman, with the presentation that, uh, with a building this size, anything smaller would almost look lost and inappropriate. So I have no problem, and I agree that something needs to be done on the cul-de-sac side to get people in there, and I'm finally glad to know what this building is, having lived here for thirty-two years and wondered for thirty-two years what it was.
Okay, so as a thirty-two-year person, you're still kind of a carpet packer, Chip, I knew.
Yeah, I know, I know, Mr. Lucy, I, I never will, uh, I've been still young, young at heart, though.
All right, any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing seeing none from the board, I'm gonna open up to the public, uh, are there any members of the public here that wish to uh, offer comment on this application tonight, if so, please use the raised hand function in Zoom, Brian, if you could stop sharing?
Yep.
The crowd left, um, going once, twice, closing public comment, back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the variance as presented to us this evening for the signs on, on uh, this building as presented tonight. Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made seconded, any further discussion? Hearing seeing non-regular voting members, and, uh, we'll go Greg on your last meeting. Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kasumi?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, that's unanimous, motion's approved.
Thank you very much.
All right, we are on to other matters, two hundred to four hundred Corner Power Parkway, request for minor modification of special permit conditioning requiring creation of shuttle system. Great, that's mine also, Mr. Chair, uh, with me tonight is, uh, Marissa Gala. From Cabot Cabin Forbes. So let me just, I can, I'm kind of teeing it up. Can you see this?
Yeah.
Great. Again, for the record, attorney Brian McReel here on behalf of C C F Corner Pop Property Company LLC. Marissa Gala was here with me tonight, you're familiar with Marissa, her and I have been before a number of times on this project, um, as it, as it moves forward. Um, this was, I just wanted to refresh your memory, this goes back to January of two thousand twenty-five. Um, and, um, and the board amended one of the conditions. Um, condition, um, uh, condition number nineteen of your decision. And it was amended to read, the applicant shall create a shuttle system providing transportation service between the property, Wakefield M P D A commuter rail. This is number three here, let me blow it up. Um, commuter rail station in downtown Wakefield, details of such service, including the frequency of service and location of shuttle stop shall be detailed in a shuttle program to be prepared by the applicant prior to the issuance of final certificate of occupancy for the project. That is satisfactory to and approved by the town's economic and community development director, or other town official designated by the town administrator. So that was modified, since that time, um, Marissa, um, has been working diligently with Erin. Um, my clients are committed to this shuttle system, there's been talk about, you know, doing something else, they're, they're committed to this at this point. Unless the town decided they wanted something else, but alls they're asking for, if you focus on the, uh, the timeframe um, in this condition, uh, prior to the issuance of the final C O, what is being proposed or requested? Um, you just bring up the request. They just, they are changing it, really are requesting a change right here to make it no later than six months following the issue, issuance of the final certificate of occupancy, because they talked to Erin about this, and they really wanna get, um, people in the building. Um, tenants, they wanna be able to talk to them about what their needs are, so they really want a little more time to develop this program appropriately. Um, and that's, that's the request, so they're not looking to duck it, they're looking to just make sure it's, 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 you know, this is something to go on in perpetuity. They wanna make sure it's implemented properly, so they wanna have people in the building so they can determine what the needs are. You know, what the timeframes are, uh, that they need it, and that they can, um, have time to work that out with Erin. I do believe, Mr. Chair, that you received the correspondence late this afternoon from Erin Kokinda, the Economic and Community Development Director, uh, supporting our request. Because she's, she's familiar with what we're trying to do here. Yep, so board members, I did get that letter from Erin, and she is supportive of this request, as Mr. McGr- as reported by Mr. McReel. All right, questions, comments from the board?
Yeah, I mean, we put this in to protect Erin, to make sure they did and worked with her, so if she's okay with it, I'm okay.
Great.
Yep. Go on the same way. All right. We don't have to open up the public, this is another matter, guess I'm looking for a motion.
So I move that we approve the delay of opening, I, I guess I'd word it that I moved the delay of opening to a minute, to a maximum of six months after final occupancy.
So I, 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 let's just word it as, you know, we're, we're gonna grant the minor modification of the special permit. Requiring the creation of a shuttle system to allow them to wait till six, no later than six months following the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy.
wait till six, no later than six months following the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy.
I make the motion as stated.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded, any further discussion? Okay, we do regular voting, voting members and Kirsten this time, so Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kasumi?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
All right, I step on the other matters at the same address, uh, request for temporary signage.
Yep. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm just going to load that up. Um, I can share my screen on this?
Yep, please do.
Great, thank you, uh, Marissa Gallis with me on this also. Um, about a year ago, the board, you, you know, I can't believe where time goes, you, you approved the temporary banner which is on the garage. Um, you approved it that we had to come back, we had to keep it in good order and we had to come back to extend times. So we're looking to do that to get more time and also to modify that banner. Uh, and to, and to re, repurpose the banner that's up on the garage. And what is being proposed is, um, this banner at the bottom is the banner, you might recall, that is currently on the garage. And what they're proposing is to take it off of the garage, there's a sign, he, there's a little note here that the existing banner is, is right here. So this banner at the bottom is currently mounted here on the garage facing the highway one twenty-eight. Lake Quinapaw is down below. They want to re, they want to take that banner down and they want to put up a new combined banner on the, on the actual building itself, not the garage. Um, and they just want to say, um, the, uh, now leasing the basin. And this, this shows, and I think this is, you know, probably more attractive and really fits in and almost looks like a sign ban on the building. Uh, they just want to make a statement onto one twenty-eight, the name of the project now leasing, people are interested, we know what they're going to do, they're going to Google it. Um, so so this, this is what, this shows here, a pop. This is the garage on this end and it shows where the banner would be on this building. It's really two banners, I, you know. So that's, that's one request, and then the banner that they're taking down on the, from the garage, they'd like to repurpose that, um, and put it on the building facing the, uh, facing the walking path, uh, for people. You know, it's low level just to let people, you know, the lake gets a lot of traffic just to, for people that are walking the lake, um, to be able to, this is where that would be, going back to the key on the, on this building. So this way, if people are meandering or exercising around the lake, they're going to know the name of the project and that, that units are available. So you would just like to repurpose that. So that is the, uh, that's a request.
All right, thank you, uh, members of the board, comments, questions?
Timeframe? Do we know we're going to give them a six months a year or what?
Yeah, I, you know, a minimum of six months, we'll come back, I think, you know, we'd like to keep it up as long as we're, you know, with our leasing going on, but we're happy to keep coming back and giving updates and, and asking to extend it.
So, Mr. Chair, I have no problem with one twenty-eight, I have a problem with the lakeside. I don't think we need a big banner on the lakeside, I think it just mucks up the nice work that they're doing over there. So I'm fine with one twenty-eight, I don't think we need to put it on the lake.
Yeah, I tend to agree that, um, I, I get the repurposing of the sign. And, and I'm not against a sign, but you put two nice ones out on one twenty-eight, which is fine, why wouldn't you do the same type of thing facing the lake?
Yeah, I just don't think they even need any sign facing the lake.
And what kind of condition is that sign in? Just because it's been out there for a while.
Yeah, Marissa, any thoughts you can add to the board?
Um, yeah, our, uh, original, uh, intention was that that building is still under construction, so it would only remain up until we turn that building over, which would be in April. Um, and then the sign would come down, but, um, as far as the condition of the sign, I mean, from what I've seen, and obviously we would inspect it before we reinstalled it, but it did fare pretty well, given the conditions that it's been up there. Um, and it doesn't look that there's any rips or tears in it, but, um, obviously whatever the decision of the board is, um, we respect that, so.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just of the mind that people that walk in the lake, if you're close enough, you realize it's under construction and that they're probably going to want to lease, so. I'm not on the one on the lake path, I'm not, I'm not wild about that, for sure. Anybody else?
I'm, I'm on the fence on that one, um. The one on, on the lakeside, yeah, I mean, I hear what you're saying. But it's a construction site and I, I guess it's kind of big, seems kind of big. If it was a little smaller, but I guess you don't want to buy a whole new sign, but, I don't know, I'm on the fence, I guess.
No, they want to put it on the building, not on the
I know, I'm on the fence.
I mean, I guess that, I'd feel like if they want to do a smaller sign or something more tasteful on the lakeside, I could look at that, but I don't know, I just don't think the lakeside's necessary, I get one twenty-eight, I don't think the lakeside's necessary.
So, Marissa, do you have fencing up there? I haven't been down that path, is the, what's on your scrim on your fence?
Um, we do, but I don't believe it has any logo in there.
No, we got Callahan to take off their thirty-seven signs.
Uh, yeah, so it's, it is pretty bare, um, but I mean, I can take it back to the team and just maybe we consider putting something smaller and more tasteful in that general area, not necessarily on the building, but, um, we can kind of see what our marketing team thinks, um, and come back if they feel that would be beneficial.
That sounds right, that, from what I'm hearing from board members, if the one twenty-eight ones are fine, then it's the lake path.
If you, um, if you are walking along the lake, do you actually see the sign over the construction barrier? If you put it up on a building? Like, I, like, I'm, I'm short, so I don't know if I'm gonna even see that sign, if I'm walking.
You, you would, it's definitely large, um, so you would, you would see it. But we can definitely, we'll look, we'll look at it again and we can take another shot at what we can do in that area that would be a little bit more, um, tasteful and, and see what we can do.
That sounds right.
Thank you.
All right, um. So I guess I'm looking for a motion.
I move that we, uh, allow the temporary leasing sign to go up on the one twenty-eight side as discussed and presented this evening and that nothing be allowed to go on the lakeside at this moment.
Uh, do you want to add a timeframe? Do we get?
Um.
Come back in six months?
I'd say, uh, to be up no longer than six months after final occupancy. Do it on the same timeframe that the shuttle has to be running.
Sure, I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made seconded, any comments on the motion? Hearing seeing none, regular voting members and, uh, Kirsten, so Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kasumi?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, okay.
Mr. Chair, before this team leaves, can we ask, can I ask a question?
Yeah, far away.
And if I'm totally wrong and off base and you can tell me, but Marissa, the last time we were here and you asked for temporary occupancy, I asked about the completion of the garage.
Yes.
And I believe it was represented that it was completed and operational. And when I drove down, I couldn't get into it because of all the barriers that were across the roadway, so A, I don't think it's finished. The materials on the outside of the garage aren't up on it yet. So what is the status of the garage currently?
So the, the team is filing for TCO for that phase, which includes the garage and then the hundred and sixty units of the portion of building four hundred. So I believe that they're going down to file TCO with all documentation on tomorrow, actually, um, with anticipation of receiving it for Friday. The reason that the road is so closed off is because we technically don't have that TCO, so where it's not open to residents yet, but the garage is completed and they did install the fins on the exterior of the garage, I believe, a week and a half ago or two weeks ago at this point. Um, so that garage
It has, it has been dark when I've been driving by lately, so. I guess my frustration is, is that it was represented that it was all set to go. And it wasn't, that's my frustration.
I apologize.
Just got to be really careful with, I mean, you guys are asking us to do a lot. And I appreciate the hard work you guys are doing, but when you say something's done, we believe it. Um, so in the future, please either quantify or qualify your statements, like it's not done yet, but, or whatever, that's so I just, you guys are doing a great job, I just don't want it tainted.
Okay, yeah, understood.
Okay. Moving on then, uh, under other matters, next up is six ten Salem Street, request for temporary certificates of occupancy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Attorney Brian McGreal on behalf of the owners of six ten Salem Street, this is the
Can you stop sharing? Oh, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't even realize I was doing this. Sorry about that.
No problem.
It, um, this is on six ten Salem Street, uh, this is the, um, apartment building, which is right on the Linfield line. Um, it was, uh, constructed by the Florrie family who owns basically half the street at this point. Um, I was in there today, it's absolutely beautiful, it's completed. Um, and, um, they are, we are, you know, finalizing um, some, uh, of the conditions, I've got the package put together to submit to E O H L C on the regulatory agreement, the affordable units, I'm going to be sending that into the town this week uh, for their participation through, uh, Erin and Marissa, we need the town planner. Uh, but in the interim, we're, we're requesting, um, fifteen temporary certificates of occupancy, there's thirty units. They'd like to start renting the market rate units and they're just looking for fifteen of them at this point. And for occupancy of the garage and the, uh, public, uh, should they say the common areas? Um, um, so that they can start, uh, leasing this, uh, building up for the market rate units. So it would only be a temporary CO for fifteen of the thirty units, the parking garage and common areas.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I went by, I went by the building last Saturday, Sunday, excuse me, and couldn't get in, uh, but certainly the exterior parking lot lights, landscaping, without a plan, all appear to be as proposed. And I certainly have no problem with only fifteen units and then we have a chance to, and as long as, you know, the building official says all light safety is good to go, then I have no problem with holding off and taking a set of plans and going down and really going through it for final occupancy, but I'm okay with the fifteen units.
Okay.
And why are you asking for temp CO, is it because we haven't signed off on it yet?
Yeah, we don't have our regulatory agreement with the, with the state on the affordable unit, so the, the, the town needs some leverage for sure, so. Uh, we're, we're in the process, I, as I said, I'm going to be sent it into the town this week and then we'll work with the town on the, on the, um, you know, putting the, what's needed, we have a, we've retained, uh, an affordable consultant to do the lottery and we've got to go through all that process.
Just the building's done, right? It's been done for a month or two, right?
It's done, it's done, yeah. Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah, but I do have to say, um, Mr. Florrie, who's a wonderful guy, when I went to the building today, he said, make sure you tell, uh, Mr. Topell, there's two shrubs missing in the back, I know about it. And he honestly did, and he said, tell him I'll plant three.
He's always going to be looking.
I didn't have a plan with me.
Yeah. It said they're in the back of the building, Chip, he said there's two.
All right. Everyone okay with this?
Yeah.
I think you just need to authorize me to send a letter to Benny.
I move that we authorize the chair to send a letter to the building inspector regarding six ten Salem Street.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, um, any further discussion? Regular voting members and Greg, uh, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah.
Kasumi?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Yeah, I vote yes as well, okay. Next up is, uh, nine ninety-eight to a thousand Main Street. Yep.
Uh, thank you.
Brian, I'm not even sure why you need this. Well, the law was passed to give you the two years, is this just for?
Yeah, this is for belt and suspenders, I, I, so basically, this is the, uh, comprehensive permit project, Greenwood Station LLC, nine ninety-eight, one thousand Main Street. Uh, the board, um, the board, um, uh, the board extended this um, to, um, November of two thousand twenty-five, um, which is coming up, you know, in, in two weeks. But since that time, the state implemented the Permit Extension Act, um, which, because of, you know, all the, you know, going on with, with interest rates and, you know, market conditions, uh, extending permits automatically in the state law for two years, that would take us to November twenty-five, two thousand twenty-seven. Um, I, I, um, to be quite honest, I get nervous with that stuff because, um, I'm always the one for belt and suspenders. And, um, so I called town, town council, Mullen, uh, and had a discussion with him, he looked at it with me, he said, I think you're on solid ground. Uh, he said, but, you know, he, he said, I would recommend going back to the board and just to get them to extend it to be consistent with the state law. And that just helps us because it, it's in the file. If, you know, for financing, if we go to finances in six months or a year, I don't want someone looking at the record of the board saying, oh, it expired in November, uh, twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five. So I'm respected, respectfully asking the board to, uh, extend the time to exercise the comprehensive permit, to extend the comprehensive permit consistent with state law to November twenty-five, two thousand twenty-seven.
So Brian, I, I have no problem doing that, the question I have is where we already extended it, does it go back retroactively to when you got the permit? Two years, or does it go to our last extension, or is that a little unclear?
I think it goes to your last extension because it says if a permit is in, is, is in existence at, you know, it's extended from two, for two years from when it would expire.
Okay.
So, i- you know, so it doesn't talk about extensions, Chip. Um, I think, you know, I think it's pretty clear what the intent is, but that's the exact reason why I want this. I don't want to be debating this and, and having this project ready to go and then all of a sudden the floor drops out and I'm litigating something on a permit extension act. Uh, on a case of first impression.
I have a, I have a question on, so this project, um, it's extended a couple of times, correct?
Three.
How is that working with the people actually living on that location right now? Like, how is, how like, is there possibilities for them to get noticed one day, like, oh, you got to move out in like a month or two if the project
I don't know, I don't know the status on people living there, Kasumi, I'd be mistr, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know if anyone's living there right now, to be honest with you.
That's the
And, and they might be.
Yeah, they, yeah, yeah, that
No, Kasumi, are you, this is down in Greenwood.
Yeah, like, right by the Greenwood, uh, school, yeah, there are people live there, so I'm just wondering like how that
Well, that would, you would have to comply with state law on, you know, on termination of tenancies and evictions like you have to do on any project.
Okay.
So, you know, I think, I think what you're probably going to see on this, I think he's going to come back if, you know, if, if we get the extension, which hopefully we do with, in the not-too-distant future, to do a couple of minor modifications. Um, he's got somebody very interested in building this, but we might need to make a couple of changes, so I might be back in the not-too-distant future, um, looking for some modifications on this. For consideration by the board.
That's a long, you might have to add a floor to it.
No, not, not add a floor to it.
I was thinking they might have to take a floor off.
Yeah, I'm fine with it, keep, keep it moving.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chair, I move that we extend the permit from November twenty twenty-five to November twenty twenty-seven, as state law regulates us to do.
Seconded.
I actually think he's pretty lucky to have state law in his favor right now.
All right, how motion's been made, any further discussion from the board? Hearing seeing none, regular voting members and Kirsten, uh, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kasumi?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
I vote yes. So that, that will be extended, um, till November twenty twenty-seven.
Thank you.
All right, that takes up all the other matters, um. Moving on quickly to clerk board comments, couple of minor things here for folks. Um, as you know, I was authorized to sign off from the board on five ninety-six North Fav. Uh, the building, Benny came back, uh, with this, said it might need a, a fence because of a fall zone there. So I'm just gonna write him back and say that it's consistent with the parameters of what we agreed to, so I don't, we don't really need a vote or anything, but just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And then the second thing, um, was our hearing schedule. Um, I texted, uh, the hearing schedule out, um, to the board, um, it's just kind of a pro forma vote, but we wanna just finalize it cuz Amy, it's important that Amy had these dates, so believe it or not, the submission deadlines for our January meetings aren't that far away, so we wanna just take a voice vote here, is everyone okay with the schedule is distributed?
Yes, and when are we going back to live?
Our goal was, uh, January.
January, okay.
So we might only have one more Zoom meeting.
Or hybrid, yeah.
Yeah, hybrid, whatever. Right, get a voice on that, all those in favor of the, uh, schedule?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you, uh, next up, approval minutes for the meeting of October twenty-ninth.
I move that we approve the minutes of October twenty-ninth as written.
Seconded.
Okay, voice vote is all we need, get it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And, uh, that's it.
We adjourn.
Always in order, don't need a vote here, guys, thank you. I was pretty good on my prediction, I said nine o'clock, eight fifty-six.